Good evening. I'd like to call the June 3, 2019, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the rule?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Ms. Sims?
Here.
Ms. Purdy?
Here.
Mr. Earl?
Ms. Cameron?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Rue?
No.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Simms, second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Purdy?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Will all those who are able please rise from the floor to the regions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe everyone has a copy of the draft Monday, May 20, 2019, minutes. Is there any motion or comments?
Just may I move that we adopt the meeting.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Weisman to adopt the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Purdy? Pass. Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Speakers are allowed to five minutes. Total time allotted, 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by Councilwoman Number 91-25. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the city? If so, please go to podium, state your name, and press forward the record. Please speak into the microphone so that everyone may hear you and say your name.
Sure. My name is Paul Miller. I live at 2370 Charney Road. I've lived here for about 40 years. And there's only one thing on my mind tonight, and it's something that I'm just irritated about. So, if you walk around the corner of my house, four or five houses down and across the street, there's a house there that's been rented. It's rented to students or working -- I think they're students. Two things truly upset me. One is, we have an ordinance that says X amount of renters can live in a particular rental, except that at this particular house, it's either five, six, or seven. How do I know that? How I know that is because I have a lovely dog. Ten pounds. Dog's name is Molly. Walk Molly every morning. So I walk Molly at 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, and I pass the house. I'll either see five cars, six cars, or seven cars. Now, where are the seventh car? And where's the sixth car? That's my other complaint. Where they are is they're in the driveway. You can go down Warrensville Center Road at 7:30 in the morning, go 7 o'clock in the morning from Cedar 7, and you're going south. And you're going south, and on the left and the right-hand side, you're going to see the exact same thing. You're going to see a number of cars in the driveway. You're going to see five, six, seven different cars in the driveway. You'll see the exact same thing that I'm about to talk about, and that is that the cars, because the driveways are taken up by the cars, the last car in, or the second-to-last car in, is extended outward. So it's past the driveway. It's past the driveway, goes onto the sidewalk. So two things happen. Number one is lots of people who are old, lots of people who have baby carriages, they cannot walk through the car. They go to a route. And I don't understand why we have five, six, seven renters. So if somebody could explain to me why that is happening, I'd love to hear it. If you can't, then do something about it, would you please? Thanks very much. And by the way, before I leave, I would like to say Jeff, our service director, we tend to find fault in lots of people. Maybe, maybe I do. I don't know. But he does a hell of a job. He really does. I've called him many number of times, and he does the job on a very timely basis, and he knows what he's doing. He's really an asset to the city.
End of story.
Oh, you're here. I didn't realize you were here.
Blushing.
All right. Is there anyone else who would care to address the city this evening? Okay. Mrs. Thomas, we arrange.
Thanks, Kelly. I actually have some answers for Mr. Miller, but that's not my job. I've come to comment on something from two meetings ago. I couldn't come last time. I was sick. But two meetings ago, there was some mention that Mr. McConville was going to be asked to write an ordinance, more ordinances, about indoor furniture being outside, or something like that. You know, before we get our BBTs in a nod, once a year, over sofas being discarded, why don't we enforce the ordinances we already have? I could name a whole list. I've come tonight to mention one particularly: rubbish cans in the front yard. I think we have an ordinance about rubbish cans in the front yard, garbage cans, whatever you want to call them. If we could enforce that, that would help tremendously in the appearance of this city. And on the way up here, I wasn't, I don't know, there's a third flag on the flagpole on the City Hall. I don't recognize the flag. I'm, maybe I do. I'm not sure. It's not flying. It's flying flat. And if we could find out how we get our flag up there, if I have a flag, I'm interested. I'm a Girl Scout troop, or how do I get my flag? And what's the procedure to get a flag? A third flag, or a fourth, or fifth flag on the flagpole? But mostly, I've come to talk about the lack of, not the lack of, about the garbage cans being in front of the house, in front, out on driveways and stuff. And I'm not, so say the rubbish is picked up on Wednesday. I know the route. So I'll go to a neighborhood where the rubbish is on Wednesday. Following Monday, the cans are still there. They've been there all weekend. And coming down Meadowport, there's trash, not student trash, the resident trash. When there's trash on the tree room like that, can't we just pick it up and ask and charge an outrageous fee for an unrequested service call? There's trash all over this city. It's lawn furniture. It's a table or something. And then we came down, I don't know, maybe Sillsby or something. There's little children's little chairs, not college stuff. I doubt very much that they're college stuff. There's rubbish and trash all over this city. I wish we could get rid of it, but thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Mrs. Simms. Is there anyone else who would care to address the city this evening? There is no one. Then I would move on to the reports and communications from the mayor and taking note action. The joint meeting of the University Heights City Government, Cleveland Heights City Government, and the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School Board will be Monday, June 24, at 6:30 PM, here at Board Offices. I ask that all council members, directors, and normal attendees of the city administration attend that meeting. Today, Economic Development Director Susan Drucker and I met with representatives of the other two governmental bodies to discuss an agenda. The three items that we expect to have on the agenda are: sharing of resources, otherwise known as forward together, borrow a term that Shaker Heights uses, in which we will, which will include brief presentations by all three governing bodies identifying all the ways that our three bodies already work together; a discussion of the bus depot and its future, which will necessarily dovetail into a discussion about the future of widely progress; third, the 2020 census. I am optimistic for a positive meeting where we work to move forward together on issues of mutual concern. Since our last meeting, representatives of NEORSD met with Service Director Jeff McCormick, City Engineer Joe Jimmy, and me to discuss a draft report regarding the Interceptor Local Sewer System Evaluation Study. They presented on local system evaluation, potential improvements, and implementation considerations. Their report is only in draft form, but once it is final, it is my intention to invite them to present at a council meeting or at all special meetings so that they may deliver their findings and recommendations directly to our council and directly to the public in this form. Our Finance Director, James Goff, has been busy at work modernizing the point-of-sale and credit card processing at the building department and at City Hall. I do not want to steal his thunder, but he will be providing counsel with an extensive report of the activities, progress, and status of the ongoing conversion to the VIP accounting system and the ongoing reclamation project of the 2017 books that has been a complication in the conversion, and more on this in his report this evening. Ms. Drucker, Patrick Rovinmeyer, and I met with David Hart and Krista Hopkins, City Insultors. A few years ago, our city worked with Mr. Hart and his staff on a project meant to achieve a comprehensive rezoning of the city. That project was shelved in 2014. As we look to restart the process of a comprehensive rezoning of the city, we met to discuss where we left things off and ascertain the whereabouts of the work completed under the previous agreement, which all parties agree is no longer controlled, and how the city might proceed from here. Mr. Hart himself is moving to Chicago this month to be closer to his grandkids. We will be discussing this matter further with Chris Hopkins as we weigh our options. In the meantime, there are two new zoning districts, residential attached to parks and recreation, that will be considered by the Planning Commission this coming Thursday, June 6, at 7:00 PM, both of which are different than those that were contemplated under the previous word with Mr. Hart. There will also be a public hearing before the next council meeting at June 17, 7:00 PM. Both of those meetings are here in this room. This past weekend, I attended Cleveland Pride for the second time, and for the first time today, we hoisted the Pride flag at City Hall in support of the LGBTQ community. The 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots is later this month, and I would like to issue a proclamation or joint resolution with council in recognition. More on that, I think, at the next meeting. The Memorial Day Parade was a wild success, and I thank Special Projects Coordinator Rachel Mullin first and foremost for her strong work in making this maybe the best parade yet. I'd also like to thank the committee: Pete Bernardo, Barbara Blankfeld, Harvey Blankfeld, Phil Erdl, Jane Evans, Rich Fried, Robin Gernsheimer, Wendy Gernsheimer, Jerry Jacobson, Patty Shield, Sean Weiss, for their work as well on making the Memorial Day Parade a success. There is a list of people that we also thanked and recognized at the memorial service, and I think it's appropriate to thank them once more here on the record at council. So if you're there with me, I thank our council members who were present: Michelle Weiss, John Rock, Anne Cameron, Mark Weisman, and together with the council members who could not be present, Phil O'Reilly, Stephen Simmons, and our Vice Director, Stuart Martin. Thank you to our members of our Board of Education who were present, participated in the parade: Joey Sreen, together with James Posh, Paula Lewis, Dan Heinz, and Beverly Rock. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank the judges that joined us in the parade: Judge Francine Goldberg, Judge Kathleen Nistula, Judge Ashley Kilbane, Judge Wanda Jones, Judge Gail Williams Byers, and Judge Maureen Clancy. Special thank you to our parade grand marshals, Henry and Adel Zucker, who honored us with their presence and participation, and for their decades of service to our community and to our country. I'd also like to thank the business of organizational contributors to the Memorial Day Parade: O'Reilly's Pub and Grill, University Heights Library, and Sport Books. Thanks to Father Bernie McInnes, the Assistant Dean of Students, and Rabbi Yakon C. Katzen of University Heights Columbia, who made it this year. The floodwaters of Baltimore did not keep it away this time. And thanks to our interns, Eva Yubizan and Mai Kwong. Thanks to our University Heights Symphonic Band, under the direction of Matthew Salagio. Thank you to our Service Director, Jeff McCormick, our Assistant Service Director, John Pacella, and especially to the city service employees that were there that day: Dave Manfroni, Bruno Duclou, Tom Pakleben, John Douglas, and Chuck Stein. I'd also like to thank Mike Hott, who mounted every flag along the parade route among other tasks. Thanks to John Carroll University, to Kate Malone, John Carroll University, the Manager of Government Community Relations, and thanks to Pete Bernardo, and I'm not going to forget this time, thanks to Mike for the things that he did. I had to go back and clean that up at the ceremony the other day. What I would also say then is, I did feel, and a lot of residents commented, that they felt it was our best parade yet. The flyover didn't happen because of high air traffic over Cleveland and fuel issue once the air traffic was good. But no matter, the parade will be back next year. Mark your calendars. It will be on Memorial Day. Thank you. This concludes my report. First item on the agenda is Letter A, Ordinance 2019-28, amended modified ordinance section 1620.02 entitled Establishment of Bureau of Fire Prevention to clarify the schedule of non-residential or commercial inspections and provide for referral to the city prosecutor. This is on second reading. Chief, you have the rule.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I guess this is on second reading. A couple changes from the last council meeting. It was on first reading. In the red line version, you'd see section capital letter E. On council's recommendation, we added the word "each" to all those different types of tests that can be conducted. And then capital letter, section G. There was a typo for $25. We changed the comma to a period. On the second page, lowercase letter F, the penalty fee referred to 1620.99, that has been changed to 1610.99, which is our existing language. 1610 is the Ohio Fire Code ordinance language that we have on the books now, and the penalty fee that is in the current ordinance will suffice for this one. Those are the only changes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Are there any questions for Chief Perko or any comments on the legislation?
Mr. Rock? I just mentioned it was on second reading. We did discuss this earlier in the safety meeting.
Third time's the last. Very good. Is there a motion?
Yes. Ordinance 2019-28, the code of fire, section 1620.02, entitled Establishment of Bureau of Fire Prevention.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Weiss, a second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Purdy?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss? Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Next is item B, Ordinance 2019-30, enacting modified ordinance section 1620.06 entitled Fire Protection Systems for the Purpose of Regulating Fire Alarm Inspections. This is on first reading. Chief Perko, you have the rule.
Thank you, Mayor. This one expands on the previous one, the subsection E that we just spelled out, that each system should be tested. This clarifies each of those systems, talks about the different types, whether it be sprinkler, standpipe, fire alarm, or hood suppression system. And it says that it needs to be witnessed by a certified State of Ohio Fire Inspector from the Fire Prevention Bureau, and that it needs to be scheduled at least two days prior with our Bureau so that we can witness it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Speaking of Michael.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Chief, do you believe that today's sufficient time for staff to notify before the schedule is in effect?
On our end?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be sufficient. And it's not less than. Many of these are reoccurring, like a hood system, for example, is every six months. So we'll have a general idea when many of these are coming up. Very good. Chief, any questions? Comments? Did you have anything to add? No, Mr. Cameron.
Only to echo the chief's remarks, and this is really just for fleshing out of the fire system references for which we just enacted a fee schedule prior ordinance.
Very good. Then we will consider this first reading to have been handled. Well, happy to move on to the next item on the agenda. I have received a motion for the approval to apply for a fiscal year 2019, second quarter Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant for the purchase of personal TICs for the fire department. Chief Perko, once again, you have the rule.
Thank you. This is Firehouse Subs. They offer a public safety grant program quarterly through their foundation. It's for the purchase of lifesaving equipment and fire prevention and education tools. We took a look at some of our equipment coming up on our five-year replacement plan, and thermal imaging cameras is something that's on that list. Those are digital cameras that have a heat index finder that helps us find victims in swelled environments. They can be used for search and rescue and hazmat operations. The industry standard had always been that you have one large and expensive unit per vehicle, so that the crews working together would use that one device. The National Fire Protection Association is coming out with new standards, and the industry is going to be changing into going towards personalized cameras. They're more affordable, they're smaller, easier to use, and they offer better firefighters to totally awareness for individual use. So we are looking to write this grant for the purchase of individualized thermal imagers for each of our members, and there is no match on this grant.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions or comments, Chief Perko, on this matter? Yes. Mrs. Perko.
Chief, this sounds like a wonderful opportunity. Glad you found it and had a great use of the funds. Are these units pretty intuitive, or is their training needed? And if there's training, is it included in the purchase of the item?
The training is not included, however, even though the device is slightly different, the training that's involved is similar to what we've had with our other devices. And moving forward, we'd be able to use that same training.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any further question for Chief Perko, further comment on this agenda? Is there a motion?
No motion.
Okay. Motion approved by John Rock, Councilman John Rock, second by Councilwoman Weiss. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Purdy?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2019-31, authorizing Kelly M. Thomas, Clerk of Council, for the City of University Heights, to be the designee for various city council members for open government served by public records training. Mrs. Thomas, did you want to comment on this resolution?
Sure. This is the...
Could you find a microphone to speak into me just because of the recording? Thank you.
Yes, this is the semi-annual records retention schedule that I go to meetings for the council. First, they, the council doesn't necessarily have to attend public records retention laws, but if they don't attend, they have to designate me as their person to help the laws. So the City Hall, they need a Friday, a citywide meeting that the mayor orchestrated for the city, and surrounding cities, and for the public in general. So I designated the council members, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Purdy, Councilman Phil Erdl, and Councilman Mark Weisman, to be the designee. They only have to attend to this meeting once during their term. So these are the members that are in current terms, so I intended so they would be part of the state regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Is there any discussion about this resolution? Is there a motion? Okay. Motion by Mr. Erdl, second by Mr. Simms. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Purdy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and/or real estate matters. And there are four real estate matters to discuss this evening, together with a personnel slash legal issue. So I would ask for a motion to have an executive session in the usual meeting to discuss those matters. Motion by Mrs. Cameron, second by Mr. Weiss. Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Purdy?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Yippee for the shoo-in chant. Moving right along to directors' reports. Hi, Mr. Goff. You have the rule.
Counsel? Yeah, I distributed before the meeting a copy of a regular report coming, and I would take liberty at this point to read it, actually, to you, for those of the audience. Deputy Finance Director Rita Drew and I were able to close out December 2018 bank reconciliation on April 18, 2019, by finalizing and posting reconciling items held over from 2017 to 2018 prior to the start of my tenure in July 2019. The reconciliation process required continuous review of transactions from 2018 on posted 2017 reconciling items in order to avoid ongoing and continued reconciling errors. Until the closeout of the December 2018 bank reconciliation was complete, I was unable to determine the final ending fund balances for December 31, 2018, for use in the new VIP accounting system. An accurate final ending fund balance for December 31, 2018 is critical due to the January 1, 2019 switch of the accounting systems. To enable the use of the VIP accounting system beginning on January 1, 2019, I entered temporary beginning fund balances into the VIP accounting system. Since without available fund balances expanded, the VIP accounting system... Since without available fund balances expanded, the VIP accounting system will not permit the printing of checks in any instance. Initial attempts to update the January 1, 2019 beginning fund balances to match the final ending fund balances for December 31, 2019 resulted in the VIP accounting system incorrectly reporting the beginning fund balances as other increases rather than as beginning balance. After receiving technical support from the vendor of the VIP accounting system, I entered the correct journal entries on May 22, 2019, in order for the January 1, 2019 beginning fund balances to properly report as beginning balance. The process of repairing the 2019 bankrupt reconciliations thus began in earnest on May 22. The correction errors caused by... The correction of errors caused by operating error in the finance departments running through the accounting system are hindering the bankrupt reconciliation process. Until recently, I had been unable to provide my full focus on reparations in 2019 bankrupt reconciliation due to a grave of other projects and tasks that required my attention. Auditors from Davis Hughes of the CPA team were on site April 23 to April 25. In early May, I was out of office frequently to attend trainings, May 7 and May 3 in Columbus at Servicemonte, May 7 in Columbus at Ohio Government Finance Officers Association, updating on Ohio legislative and state Ohio legislation. In May 9, West Gas Center, Ohio Government Finance Officers Association, dead somehow. Since early April, I have been working with Dollar Bank to apply for and receive new credit cards for the city. Instead of having one credit card with a credit limit of $10,000 for Huntington Bank, the city now has a $25,000 credit limit at Dollar Bank, six cards available for natural circulation. The increase in the number of credit cards is important in order to allow multiple employees to use credit cards at the same time, especially when employees are currently part of the town or not in the city business. The increase in the available credit line is important to the historical monthly revenue between $7,000 and $8,000 resulting in maxing out of the bulk $10,000 credit limit before Huntington Bank processes the monthly payment. In April, I received a directive from the mayor to ensure that the city would accept credit card payments in City Hall as well as the public housing departments by May 1, while also updating the credit card collection process at the city pool. June, I don't remember hearing at any point between January and now about these different issues that are going on, and different problems. And I know that sometimes it probably feels a little overwhelming, but really, I think the best rule of thumb is to say, hey, I've got an issue, even at an open meeting, and we'll help you through it and find you help if you need help. What's a little difficult for us to digest now is that you got this report 20 minutes ago or five minutes before the meeting, and it basically says that all these things have been going on since January, and now you're telling us about it. We have one more meeting before the end of the year. So if I could change one thing about this, it would be the way this is presented to us in future meetings. As far as some of the details are concerned, I'm looking at the website. It's really confusing. There's a lot of stuff on the website. Almost everything says 63, 2019 draft, so I mean, I'm just a little worried that in the rush to make everything transparent, we're dumping everything that can be dumped onto the website onto the website. And I think that invites huge problems from a governing the city perspective. Because while I want everybody to get financial information and to be transparent, I don't want the mayor or you to spend half the day on the phone explaining to somebody why check 8520 was written for $3.09 this month, whereas last month, we were at the same level, check for $8.57, and what's going on? And you don't need that headache. And that doesn't help anybody, except people who want to get in your face about this stuff. So I would encourage the administration to get together and think, what is the high level stuff we need to put on the website? Put that on the website, and let people ask for whatever they want. We'll give people whatever they want, but we don't need to put everything that we... Every check register, everybody on the website. And if there's just so much stuff on here, it's really mind numbing. And if you don't know what's going on, you could really take yourself down paths that aren't really important to you. Second of all, everything says 6319 draft. I wouldn't put anything on here that's just draft. If it's not final, don't put it on the website. I mean, that, to me, is a pretty obvious deal. So I would encourage the administration to go back to the drawing board off this particular idea and rethink the... Just spew it all out on the website. That doesn't really help anybody, and it's only going to make your job harder. Nobody's going to call me at work and say, hey, man, explain these five reports. Your guys are going to get the calls. So think about that. I'm not saying don't be transparent, but I'm saying this stuff, it's going to confuse you. Just one thing about the credit cards. I dig that $10,000 is a low amount, and 30 days, you don't get to pay someone's, and it's connected to you with a credit card or whatever. I would put a limit on the individual per purchases people can make. I would say to the credit card company, if it's over X amount, don't pay it until you hear my voice. Because with a $25,000 credit limit, all you need is one person to think, oh, hey, I found this credit card, I'm going to buy $25,000 worth of stuff. So figure that out. I mean, if that hasn't been done, I would suggest that as it go forward, cool. I like the credit limit increase, but individuals should not be able to spend anything up to $25,000 as they're gone. Again, this is, you know, not that you're inviting us to comment on every line of this, I appreciate it, but take those to heart and then... Thank you, thank you, Mr. Burko. And again, you're doing a great job, Mr. Rock. We all have been through at least three finance directors around this table, and we all have seen different ways of running the city. So I'm sincere when I say that you're doing a great job, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I want to just commend you on the thoroughness and knowledge you're working very hard. I want to echo Councilman Wiseman and Councilman Sims, some of their comments. I also agree that I don't think any drafts should be put on the website. You know, I feel like, you know, I emailed you a couple weeks ago about where we're holding with everything, and I'm not sure if that prompted all this, but, you know, I was very concerned that we haven't seen it. The council has not seen any financial statements until then. I also, I think we need very high level information on the website. You know, if you start posting all of the check registers on there, I think that's, again, I'm not sure which councilman said that, but that is going to increase your workload tremendously. And there's also, there's a lot of questions that come in. You don't know the day-to-day business, and you have some... If you have someone viewing those statements, they're going to be like, well, why'd you spend $15,000 on this? They have no idea what the intricacies of working with the city is. So I do agree that should only be high level. I have a couple just questions on some of these things, also, since this is the first time we've seen this. When you have the... You instituted these new credit cards, do you have a sign-out system so you know who has which card at each card?
Yeah, we have a sign-out system. The dollar bank cards have only now just started going out.
Okay, so someone's signing in and signing out, see if they're on. Also, in terms of the credit card terminals, why would, like, the fire department need a credit card terminal?
The fire department has started with, especially dealing with their fire prevention, now that they're initially opening our setup to go into the future of collecting months for permits. They're also in a position, they have issued notifications for violations that have brought our order fees associated with them. And the process we have comes in determining how best to go about collecting that and keeping track of what those violations are causing to be paid. Have you personally tracked that along with the fire management system? They also sell lock boxes.
So you're allowing... So besides the building department, which has many, many transactions with permits and garbage pickup and everything, you're allowing, well, obviously, police use it to the floor right now, but allow police and fire to make their transactions also themselves?
Police actually still does. Police still has their old credit card machine that's tied to emergency services with Huntington Bank. And they have for quite some time, I'm not sure how far back, but higher than I think years before I was here. They were, I believe, actually, the first location we had with a credit card collected of all sorts of fees, including parking, traffic fees, coming in for maximum report if you do fingerprinting, you made any one of their fees that they collect of...
But all those merchant reports come to the finance department?
Yes.
Other thing is... Okay, so there are a lot of new nonprofit standards coming out within the next year. Have any of these trainings that you said that you went to, they address any of those? Because some of them are pretty significant.
No, they have not. A lot of that bring, in a lot of cases, can potentially have a fourth CFOA panel conference, or the MFoa, which is commissable by its association, which is the affiliate group to have this fully. Those two, CFOA does their main conference in September, and the MFoa is by its association, which is in the last year of October. So that's where a lot of the community education tends to happen. There's also CPM training through the State... The Precares State's Office requires for being doing investments beyond Star Ohio or money market accounts. There tends to be physical sort of finance training that's offered by the association with that. The CPM training for Northeast Ohio is usually in September or October, November.
Okay, do our auditors email you with any new standards that are coming out?
That does not come from our auditors. That comes from a whole condition of how auditors, State's Office. And the only bolt in our CPM scheme so far this year has been for CPI index information if you have to go back and recreate historical value of the assets.
Okay, so I would just have you take a look and possibly get training for September, because there's a lot of these, it comes, a lot of new lease issues that are coming, standards that are going to be coming out, and some of them will have to be done before December 31.
Are you referring to some of the gas being standards? That is not expensively in the CFOA.
September?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to commend our finance director. We know he worked very hard, and we know that he inherited quite a situation. I don't want to go over the same ground we called to town over. I agree with them, but I do want to point out that in terms of the kinds of finance reports that the House would like to see, we will be discussing that in two days at the Finance Committee meeting on June 5 at 7:00 in the annex. That is one of the agenda items, so we'll talk about that. And maybe through that discussion, we can help the city determine what to put on the website, because there is too much transparency sometimes. This is just sort of overkill, and we don't put drafts up. There's absolutely no reason to put a draft up online unless, for some reason, the committee was putting out an outcry for information. And I have not heard that kind of outcry for this kind of information, so, anyway, we'll be discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Mr. Earl? Yes, I won't make that Finance Committee meeting, but so I would just like to say that I would like to see for council members, you described it in a way, so I can... For you, but I'm used to seeing them have summary report, making sure I wouldn't want to see anything more than a half page. I don't need a booklet or anything like that. I just need a summary report, and maybe if I want to do something like that, that's what I'd love to see. Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Sims.
Well, I have a comment and a question. The question has to do with the credit cards and, like we called not long ago, we asked for a language, credit cards. I was hoping that I could maybe reminder of what that was and how this gets handled.
The state legislature passed a law that mandated that any and all public entities adopt a credit card policy, and that policy established essentially policies and procedures for use of credit cards. And in particular, created a review process that has to occur in instances where there is not a central holder of all the credit cards.
Yeah, we've not completed the first quarter since the passage of that legislation. So the first quarter since the passage of that legislation is the current second quarter of 2019. So I expect to have a report for you in July, that report, I'm making the conclusion is going to be the compliance officer, who is, reading through the Deputy Finance Director, who is what this compliance officer, which was deemed to be in a position most likely to not use the credit card.
Well, to clarify that, the state law requires that the compliance officer be a person that is not going to engage in credit card transactions. And the point of having the compliance officer is to come before council quarterly and give you a basic rundown of credit card transactions for the private quarter, so that you are satisfied that the finance department is monitoring everything that happens with the credit cards, various purchases that are made, or purchases that are for a business purpose.
My comment, and I hope that I believe I did start out my initial remarks trying to indicate a level of appreciation for what we're doing, and the progress that we made because it is evident. But my concern now is that we may find ourselves in a sort of a position that we've been in in the past, because it sounds like there may be more work to do than we have the capacity to undertake. And I think I've heard this council say on numerous occasions, if that was to occur, that we needed to know, because we want to make sure that the finance department is properly resourced. And so the fact that we are where we are is sort of an indication to me that we may not have the resources that we need to undertake the responsibilities of that department as we should. So you don't have to respond to that, I'm just, you know, putting that out there to remind you that that opportunity exists.
I appreciate that. And at this point in time, I would say, in terms of resources, the addition of Rita Drew last fall as an employee, set for limited capacity before that as a credit card director, has aided us immensely. We are still going through the implementation process with the new accounting system that is eating away at time, especially for Denise Ballant, our finance associate, with the essentially duplicative work payroll to get processed by weekly in ADP, and getting us up to a point where we go live with accurate year-to-date, accurate deed balances in the new system. And a large part of that will, in my mind, be rectified once we get caught up with that one. I will also say, in terms of some of the workload, the amount of effort that it took going into working on those bankrupt conciliations, and I would have to look back at the memos that were attached to the interim December 2018 bankrupt reconciliation and the final one, to see what were the dates that were submitted to council. But that was a huge chunk of the time and effort as well. There are other items where I see efficiencies that we can work on. At this point, I'm not sure if you need further resources, but that's something I'm sure the mayor and I would be both very open to discussing if we get to a point where we think that is necessary. Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Anything further for Mr. Rock? I know that there is a Finance Committee meeting again on Wednesday, and much of this touches on the items already on, so this is hardly our final opportunity to discuss these things. Next, Department of Law, Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm continuing to work on a variety of ordinances, including additional fire prevention bureau ordinances that I hope to have for you for the next meeting. Other than that, I prefer to give the remainder of my report in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Public safety, police, Lieutenant Orient, give a report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things. If you don't know me, my name's Lieutenant Orient, I'm filling in for Chief Rogers tonight. And just a few things, the Park Construction Cedar Road project, starting on Monday, June 10th, they will start to... Project from... 10th, they will start to project from Legacy Village to 271. Traffic will be diverted on the south side of Cedar Road, and they will be ramping up from Green Road to Legacy Village. It's going quicker than expected. And in addition to that, we also will, the street striping will begin soon, and we will get weekly progress reports, which we'll pass along. Also, Chief Rogers did get out the 2018 Annual Report. I believe you all have a copy of that. And in a general sense, it appears that crime is down. I attribute that to our Control Division, First Line Supervisors. We have a lot of younger patrolmen, and they're doing a fine job. And I think that's evidenced by the statistics. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Lieutenant Orient. Does anybody have any questions for Lieutenant Orient?
No, I'm saying.
Thank you. Take it easy on you. Your first one. I'll shout next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Public Safety, Fire, Chief Burden.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items tonight. First, I just wanted to report that this week, June 1st through to 7th, is National CPR and AED Awareness Week. So we encourage people in the community to sign up for our quarterly CPR classes held at the library. We've got one coming up on July 25th, and the last one of the year scheduled for October 24th. And they can also call the fire department and schedule a meeting for groups larger than 10 outside of those two dates. And those are American Heart Association, Heart Saver CPR, AED courses. Hiring update, the Police Department has been diligent in getting our background checks done. We're going to have two candidates in the near future to move forward in our process for the psychological testing. Last, I have been working with the County Emergency Operations Center, looking to update our emergency operation plans. I attended a county-wide evacuation seminar a couple weeks ago to see how the county's going to be adopting their new emergency evacuation plan and how we can start developing our own locally. In conjunction with that, I'm also working on an incident action plan for the summer council series. That's all I have for the report.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Just have any questions for Chief Burden? All right, very good. Service, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A few things to report on, just that the last couple of weeks, we've been working rather hard to get our pool and park opened up. We replaced the wind screens around the tennis courts, which had tattered in the wind. We got up some new nets. Also installed emergency gates on the swimming pool fence and installed screens in the areas where there were blanks left open. So that's all up and operating. Now everything looks pretty nice, along with doing some internal things to the pool, like conduits for internet, some of those other things. So the pool's operating. Next week, we'll be continuing to work on the additions to our tree program. The tree program is complete, the bills have been made, but there were a number of items left that weren't able to be incorporated with the original contracts or their add-ons. That would be Redford and Groveland. So there's going to be three or four trees in that area that will be trimmed, along with a couple of takedowns that came up in the original contract. There'll be one, a large tree on Ashers, a tree on Silsby, and a couple of others. Once we're done with that, road repairs are back in swing. We had originally 32 patches of broken water mains over the winter. We have about 10 of those remaining, and we're working on those. Again, the intersection of Redford was one of those that kind of came up late in the season, and they just recently dug another hole on East Carroll that was another broken water main, so we'll be working on those. Along with that, we'll be working on restoration of public properties, any place that was torn up, either due to these repairs or the top areas of that kind of thing.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Gordon?
I do have a question.
Mr. Stevens.
Earlier this evening, we heard testimony from a couple of residents, and it related to trash on the lawn, that maybe trash being put out too early or being left out too long. How do we address that?
Most of that's addressed through the Building Department because they have the ability to write citations. For the Service Department, we generally just go out and pick it up.
Okay. Because personally, I would have to agree with everything that was said regarding trash that's on the street and trash that sits out too long. And I won't say especially on points, but it's especially noticeable on growth. And I don't know what it has to do with, maybe it's the school year, and a number of those homes may be, you know, rented to help students or whatever, but just the large oak kind of stuff that are sitting out there, and they're sitting out there for long periods of time and consuming carbon. So between the Building Department, you know, the Service Department, and maybe the information to address it, and making sure trash out there they can put in, I think that might go in some ways to address the concerns.
Yeah, I believe it's the Housing Department that is now issuing those citations. And yes, I know that on social media, there were some pictures posted of piles of things that were left out in front of rentals that presented that there were still rentals. And I know that in the instance of the photograph that was posted, there were notices left behind, and the Service Department, I believe, is going back to one house in particular tomorrow, is treating well to collect those items because despite having the notice, they have not been collected now. But it's been typical for our city, it's appropriate, it's a matter of due processes, whatever there is violation. We don't simply clean it, we give them an opportunity to rectify it. And if they don't rectify it, then they are in a position to be charged and/or by the city for the work that we've been doing. If we do it without notice, we can't charge them. So because we do want to charge people for the services we render when they are not tied, no fault of rules, we give them the notice to clean up, notice to have the opportunity to mitigate, rectify the situation. And if they can do that, then we do it for them. And we go. And even though that does result in some additional top or something is collected, that is the process we employ and where to charge. Otherwise, we can deal with it as fine sick.
Yeah. The piles of broken furniture and trash is always a challenge this time of year. You've got students coming out willy-nilly, you know, you never know. It's not just that a half hour after commencement. It takes a few weeks for that to happen sometimes. So that's always a challenge. And the other thing is that the rubbish being out there, other than this time of year, is usually a byproduct of there being seven cars in the driveway. If they want their rubbish picked up, they have to let it out in front of the curb. I don't know what you do about that. There may only be three people living in the house, but they have three boyfriends also, so, you know, that's just the way it works.
Yes. Mr. Stevens.
I mean, I really introduced that because I felt that there was no justification for it. But I introduced it because I think it is something that we need to pay potential time to. Well, I, again, you don't have to figure it out. The city has to, the administration has to. And so, you know, I'm suggesting that whatever we can do to address those kind of concerns, I know some communities even have, and I didn't get with our law director or speak to anyone in the administration, but some communities, and first of all, I also want to make clear, what I'm seeing, just being personally observed, I don't know anything about the on-lives. I don't go on. I'm not looking on it. I'm looking at the community. So when I speak, I'm speaking from observations and I hear say of what other, you know, what these websites you're saying. I'm not a part of them. But some communities have ordinances that speak to, you know, how, I don't know how to say this, but, you know, you can't put your trash out so many hours before it's picked up. Okay, well, we need to make sure because I, I go on my own daily living, I see trash that's out way before it should be out, and it's not just the ugliness of it, it's the fact that the trash apples come and they, you know, they throw it all over the place, and it's just something that we need to be more aware of and do what we can do to be stronger in our enforcement. I'm just, you know, that's just how I feel.
Yes, by local ordinance, trash is not to be moved up beyond the rear line of the property. Now, granted, that kind of place, not the kind of house that has a garage up front and garage in the back until the evening before one's trash pickup. And then after the trash pickup has occurred, cans will be turned to the, behind the house. It's enforced a little differently where you have houses that had attached garage on the front of the house still. There are instances where it is permissible under ordinance to remove the trash cans up front, even as far as the tree lawn, even though we offer a backyard pickup. But again, it has to be on trash day or the night.
I think we may have just one residence that really don't want to be, because it's having to be on the building. I think it goes to the residences, you know, what is appropriate was in.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anything further for Mr. Gordon? Thank you. Next is the Building Commissioner, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. As we have said before, June 6th, this Thursday, 7:00 PM, the Planning Commission will be meeting to discuss areas of rezoning within the city. Secondly, the monthly report, while I reported April as being kind of a perhaps disappointing month, May certainly reversed that trend. Our grand total of fees for the month of May, $25,874.82 for a total estimated project cost of $2,507,513. I wanted to compare this with last year's results just to see where we're standing. And the total for last year, I'm sorry, this month was $58,622. Last year, this time, was $25,874. And this year, our total project estimated cost is $6,560,000. Last year, this time was $2, I'm sorry about the numbers. But either way, what we're looking at is a major increase between this time last year and this time this year. Also, Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled to meet next week, Wednesday morning, June 12th, at 8:00 AM, City Hall, second floor. And Thursday next week, June 13th, the Architectural Review Board will also meet, second floor of City Hall at 8:00 AM. You may have noticed that work is going on now at the firehouse that was damaged last year at 3633 Tullamore. The founder of Tullamore and Rockway, our out-of-town investor, is repairing the roof this week. They've seen that going up and intends to start rehab, major rehab on the interior sections following this roof construction. He's moving along, he's putting a lot of money into this project, so I think it's going to take most of the summer. We have court tomorrow, two cases housing-related. And finally, thank you to the Mayor for the, on behalf of the Department of Employees, for the whole process.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Thank you, welcome. Mr. R.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGrath. I had raised a concern, a week ago, about a house in the 4,000 block of Washington with trash. You said you were going to go observe the site. Did you get a chance to observe it, so we can find any outcome of that?
Well, I went out, saw that the trash was, the day I went was the day of collection. So it was behind the building. I came back a little later on the day and collected it. So I didn't notice that. Although this, I have to mention that this is an ongoing problem, this location. The Housing Department also aware of this, so I respect your opinion. Anytime that that house is out, we'll go out and take a look. I haven't issued a notice on this because it was the day of collection, it was remote at the end of the collection. The problem with this house is that they often have uncovered cans, and they tend to spill out.
And isn't it part of our ordinance that the trash can has to be covered?
Yes, it has to be a covered leak duct can.
So if you discover it's uncovered, even on collection day, what are our options there?
Well, looking at it, and you see the cover on the ground because of the sore flow that's in there.
Sore flow, okay.
And that's one of the problems. And I think the solution is to provide more cans. And that would be the homeowner to do that. He's ultimately responsible, so we see the homeowner's responsibility. He's complacent, you want to turn him with the task of correcting the situations. And that, to me, would be the easiest solution, is get more trash in the system. If you like, I'll go ahead and follow that up with a notice to you.
Thanks.
Remember the address?
I have.
Okay.
Mrs. White.
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering, do you feel that this uptick is because of the CRA or it's just happens to be the summer?
I've had two applications so far for tax abatement, and I processed both of those. I approved them and sent them along to the county. I've had inquiries since then about a couple of different projects that unfortunately would not be eligible for tax abatement. But I don't know at this point. It's kind of early in the process, and the way our rules are, we have to have a project approved through planning review process and then permits issued. And then once those permits have been finalized, with a final approval, then they can apply for the tax abatement. So I'm hoping that that's the case because this seems to be a large increase. So I, it may be the case, but it's too early for me to be able to say.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. R, are one of those applications at the corner of Meadow Brook and Merrimah? They're putting an addition on their house.
Oh, I know the one. No, as a matter of fact, the application we received was for work that was completed late last year, actually. So that project's still on and on. But if you have a chance to see it, that is a nice project to use in Cedar.
Yeah, I was hoping just to buy it if it wasn't already underway, just as far as the process is concerned, or applying after minutes. I don't know.
Well, the timing for the application for the payment is after the final inspection of the construction. So to apply that would be create a tour, just to.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at all this and like that. And also, what were you going to say?
I was going to say, if there's a question in my mind as to whether a project's approvable or not, I'm going to approve it and send it down with the county. I don't know.
Okay. There's another house, it's on Meadow Brook. I was out walking around, I really wasn't sure where I was at the time when I stumbled on this house. But it's, I think it's down by Dyzard. It's the block next to those homes that are up on the hill. It's on a corner. I think that's Dyzard there, I don't know, but it is.
I think that Sims House we're talking about.
I told the police.
Actually, I think that's 39.
3799?
Yeah, 3799.
Yeah, there's a lot of work being done on that.
Yes.
Is that the real nasty one that was, you know, where Hazmat's going to?
I don't know about the Hazmat team, but this has been a project that's had a lot of problems. The original investor was an out-of-town investor, and he had a crew there that didn't seem to know what they were doing. He pulled in another general contractor to straighten things out. And we pretty much filed some of the permits over there, not all of them. There's still a couple of permits open. And it isn't done. One of the problems is, of course, the exterior aside, we have leaking windows that's been repaired.
Yeah.
And we're following that up with the point of sale program. So they're paying regular notices, and they're in danger of going to court just for the point of sale.
Yeah.
So they're getting regular notices, and they're intending to go in just from the corner sale. So that's kind of stirring them along in this project.
Yeah.
It should have been completed once.
Okay. Yeah, it looked like it stalled, I was just curious.
It did, yes. We have a change of, now contractors are moving the project. Took a while to speed up.
Okay, just curious. Very good. Thank you. Anything further for Mr. McGrath? Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Next is our city engineer, Joe Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Update quickly on two construction projects. The Washington Boulevard Waterline project has started. That goes from Staunton to Win. And they've been, the basic traffic has been put up, the detour route posted. Anybody that lives in that area can get in, because it's a, safety forces can always get through. It's local access only. Trying to divert all the cut-through traffic around Cedar and Taylor, the state way, to get the guys to work. Secondly, is the Cedar Road resurfacing project. The lieutenant touched on it, but I didn't forget the most important part is we're going to be paving this Wednesday night and Thursday night, at night. And it's the final paving course, the final surface course. Starts at Green Road, goes up to Legacy Drive, Legacy Village Drive. So that will happen Wednesday night for half the road, and Thursday night for the other half of the road. They can only get half done at a time. So that really affects our residents and our traffic here. Goodnight, Green Road intersection pavement, at night, June 5th and June 6th, after noon. It's still on schedule. I think the weather will hold, I hope, and we can get it done on any rate. And then after that is done, then they have to do the striping, the loop detectors, some cleanup. Then most of its traffic will be over, like the lieutenant was talking about, on June 9th and 10th, as they move down the road closer to 9271. And that project will continue down there.
Edgar report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chin. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this question is from where the mayor could have. In the last meeting, we're talking about the Lawrenceville project.
Yes.
And how there was complications with the, it's been a few years trying to make it work.
No, we're moving forward with it.
Right, we just put the question in, yeah, was if there was any living room.
Oh, there's actually, there is no living room. I'm sorry. Yeah, we should.
I thought you said you were.
Yeah. It's a one-size-fits-all set of regulations that applies to everybody at the project at this stage. And there was an instance where, due to, I think Mr. Chin will elaborate more on this, but it's there to prevent corruption. It's there to prevent, add some, some of this stuff. And, yeah, there is no.
Could you elaborate, Jim?
No, it's the state rules. We took their money, and it's, you know, the designer can't do inspection. As far as that project goes, we're trying to set up a pre-construction meeting probably in the next two weeks. And we'll see if it gets started. We do have a completion date in the project, August 16th. We want to get it done before school starts, when they got all the striping done, the crosswalks and all that stuff. We should see that happening soon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chin. Next up is communications and civic engagement, Mr. Cook.
Good evening. Working with just about every department in the city, we're going to start next month, we're going to relaunch the new resident package. It's going to be a tope, it's going to include a welcome letter from the mayor, it's going to include information about the Heritage Home Program, a lot of good information where it would interact. Yes, we that, we are redoing the service department booklet to correspond with the new fonts and the new logo and colors and all that. So that will be included. We will have open system tracker, we're going to have coupons and menus from local businesses. Our goal is to train new residents into lifetime customers of our local businesses. We're going to have promo items, we're going to have change of address forms, and we'll work with the police and fire departments if there's anything that they'd like included in these bags. We will do that. And secondly, just wanted to remind all of you that a week from Thursday, at the Walt, the Summer Concert Series begins at 7:00 p.m. They have a food truck there serving up barbecue starting at 5:30, and a concert by the surf rock band, the Kahuna Kings. They get away at 7:00, from 7:00 to 8:30. And to encourage people to get there early, we're going to be giving out the promo items to the first 100 folks in attendance.
Kids, right?
Kids, yes. First 100 kids in attendance. We'll receive a University Heights new local beach ball. So get there early, get some barbecue, get a beach ball, and enjoy the show.
We'll handle that.
Kids.
Where, right? Anything for Mr. Cook. Set a beach ball place. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next, there'll be our special projects coordinated parade at the mall.
Well, I think the big thing is that we had the parade, and it was a nice long parade. It was longer than anything I had had notes for in my previous years. So I think the kids were happy with all the candy they got. It was a tremendous effort from the department heads, especially the service department and police. And Mike Cook certainly was quite the asset. And I had a fabulous break, I didn't help out a ton, especially the blind fells. And Harvey came through with a convertible emergency. And it was a lot of working, you know, a lot of working pieces in the puzzle that I came through. So I'm going to meet with the committee to talk about process improvements, you know, after we come down from our parade hangover, probably in a week or two, and then we'll make them streets better.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Moore?
No, just a big thank you. You've taken a great job.
Okay, moving on to economic development, Mrs. Drucker.
Chairman Executive Session.
We will hear your report, Executive Session, thank you. And then finally, Housing and Community Development, Patrick Brooks. Mr. Brink, Mayor, you go first.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just briefly, we successfully submitted our OBR application for the three tennis court reconstruction at Purvis. If the previous years have been any indication, we should hear a week in August or September, the results of the grant application. And then the secondly, just a continuing update on the housing survey that we've been conducting over the past several weeks. We've been delayed by the holiday and the rain, which seems to not really let up here in the last several weeks. So still ongoing, and hope to have that here wrapped up by the end of the month. So, and actually, one final note related with the property maintenance grant that had just recently approved, has received a lot of interest, received a lot of phone calls in response to, whether it's the YouTube video, the council meeting, the news coverage, or seeing it on our website. The application and the guidelines are on the city's website under the housing department, both on the forms and information page, as well as the departmental page. We have produced new program pages, a little bit more information on each of the programs. The housing department covers, but also we have a housing resources page. So that includes the grant information, as well as all the various partnerships that we are involved in, Heritage Home Programs, the county logs, as well as other logs provided through other agencies here in the county.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Brink. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brink? I see none. Thank you. Thank you. So that concludes the reports and directors. We now move on to the housing committee reports. First up, building chairman, Mark Lys.
Your quote.
Civic information chairman, Emily Catter.
Yes, ma'am. Our committee, we've already met to address the movement to amend the situation. I will do a brief follow-up, and we're going to ask, being on schedule for the last meeting of the year, so that we can present to you our house and our findings and our requests with regards to that issue. And hopefully, we can bring some closure on that.
The last meeting before summer parade?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we spoke with Mrs. Thomas about that.
I have indeed.
Oh, very good. All right.
She was making that up.
Next, my trust will be, Mr. Jen. Thank you, Mrs. Catter. Next, finance, Mrs. Fergie.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a meeting in two days, Wednesday night, June 5th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Adams, on Lawrenceville Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fergie. Governmental affairs, Mrs. Weiss.
Heather Clark.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. Earl.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Safety, Mr. Rudd.
Yes, Mayor, we had a meeting on May 21st of this year to discuss many things. It was a very lengthy agenda. We talked about overnight parking restrictions. We talked about parking, just in general, on street parking. We discussed a potential stop sign at the park on Fenwick. We heard an update on the park signage, leash rules at the park, et cetera. We also heard about the towing company that handles all our towing in the city. And that was just a brush overview of the towing. We'll probably have to meet the committee again and discuss that further with the fees and the proposing for this upcoming year. And then we discussed a series of fire prevention ordinances, one that we voted on today, and location of parking of fire equipment.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rudd. Service and utilities, Mr. Sims.
No report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. And then committee and the whole, Mrs. Fergie.
Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, this concludes the regular portion of the city council meeting today, Monday, June through 2019, except for the executive session that we will be entering. We will, of course, at the conclusion of that executive session, return out of executive session, back into the public, presumably for purposes of adjournment. At this time, I don't anticipate that we'll be able to actually take it following the executive session, the executive session. Some length, even though we try to keep a brief majority in the executive session, we have several things to accomplish. I don't anticipate that any official action will be taken, but if there is, it will be something that will have to be reported on. I'm sure you asked me to what, and again, I don't anticipate that so. Nothing further? Do we have one of the committees you presented with what concerns that you go, should people want to stay here? They want to check on that, that's what we do. People who want to stick around don't have to be here.